Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Work Session, March 12, 2024. This meeting is now called to order, and first up, we have a proclamation for AmeriCorps Week, and with us, we have Anastasia Broaddus, the Program Manager for Mediation First, and two AmeriCorps members, Delia and Nikisha. Would you join me up front?
Well, right here, you are up front.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so proclamation for AmeriCorps Week for March 10 through 16, 2024. Hi, Aria. Whereas, in 2024, AmeriCorps is celebrating three decades of national service. Thirty years ago, more than 20,000 Americans raised their right hands and pledged to get things done for America. Their members helped more than 1,000 communities nationwide during their first year of service. And whereas, since then, more than 1.25 million Americans and hundreds of thousands of more, AmeriCorps senior volunteers of all backgrounds have followed in their footsteps, providing billions of hours of result-driven service across each of the 50 states and U.S. territories, where members and volunteers ensure students are set up for success. And whereas, in times of tragedy, when America calls, AmeriCorps answers. Members are stepping for, have been stepping forward to help after 9/11, aiding in recovery from disasters like Hurricane Katrina, and have pivoted to address the urgent needs created by COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, AmeriCorps volunteers are often the first on the ground and the last to leave, making sure to leave their projects better than they found them. Now therefore, I take issue Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, designate March 10 through 16, 2024, as AmeriCorps Week, and encourage our citizens to thank AmeriCorps members for their service and give back to their, and how they give back to their own community. And I want to say firsthand that the conflict resolution part of being an AmeriCorps member is extensive training. And I know it's extensive training because I was AmeriCorps supervisor, and you guys have to take a lot of training, and you have to supervise all of that, and all the hours of service and learning, and just the ways that you give back in our, in their community for conflict resolution. Thank you. Thank you for your work in the prisons. Thank you for your work in the school system, and thank you for the work in the community.
Thank you so much for this. Nikisha, thank you for everything that you do, for not only Mediation First, but AmeriCorps Community Mediation Maryland. We are very, 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 very lucky to have you. This is Nikisha's second year, and so you can do up to four years of service, and so thank you so much for your two years of service. You have been stellar, the training that you have. Every day, you exemplify what it is to be an AmeriCorps member, and we are incredibly grateful for your service. Thank you so much. And for you, Delia, a former AmeriCorps member, Delia is now our reentry coordinator, but the AmeriCorps program gave her a lot of the training and the boots on the ground. And so when it comes to our incarcerated individuals and those who are being released from prison, she is the main person that comes in contact with them. So Mediation First couldn't do it without AmeriCorps or you doing your job for incarcerated individuals. So thank you both for all you do. Thank you.
You guys got on your mediation purple.
Okay, good smiles. One, two, three. One more. Good smiles. Okay?
That's mediation. Good job. Thank you guys for the work you do. All right. If I could, just really quickly, I just want to shout out Aria, who is in the gallery. Today is National Girl Scout Day, and building girls with courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. Aria, happy Girl Scout Day. All right. All right, and now, C-Biz presentation, and we have Don Francis, Director of Human Resources, and Amy Dreschpock, our Benefits and Wellness Administrator, and then we have William, Mr. William Carval. Did I say that correctly? Our C-Biz Executive Vice President, and Michelle Brandonberg, PNC Investment Market Director.
Good afternoon, everybody. We are here today to talk about the Police-Fire Retirement Plan and our obligation. This is a presentation that we don't do very often, but is extremely important. The Police-Fire Retirement Plan represents the retirement mechanism for all of our sworn police officers as well as our firefighters. So it's extremely important to us. The plan's been in, been in place since about the mid-1990s, I believe. It was, it was done by my predecessor the first time I was here. So it's, it's a plan that, that we have some, some experience with. I have to my right, Mr. William Carbone. He's the Executive Vice President and the Consulting Actuary for C-Biz on the plan, and he'll, he'll do the basic presentation initially, and then, once Bill's done, we'll ask Michelle Brandonberg, who is the PNC Investment Marketing Director, to come up and talk a little bit about the investments in the plan. I have also with me folks that most of you know, Glenn Fusick, who is one of our firefighters, CPA, and serves as the Chair of the Committee for the Police-Fire Pension Plan. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Bill and let him do his thing.
Thank you, Don. So what we do is we do evaluation every year to determine the amount that, you know, actuarily determined contribution to be deposited into the plan. And, you know, so this just shows the number of participants in the plan from year to year. You have 160 actives, 112 retirees, and 19 individuals that have terminated employment but haven't reached the age yet where they could start drawing benefits. So the one thing, if you would note, just, you know, there isn't substantial change in the head counts from year to year, and that's good news, because that will tend to have, mean you're going to have less volatility in your costs. Same with the average age and average length of service. That's remained relatively stable. Once again, that's just good news as far as just kind of stabilizing your costs. So just some basic plan provisions. Right now, the, the participants contribute 9% of pay to the plan, and the city contributes 14% of pay. To get full benefits out of the plan, you need to meet the normal retirement age requirements, which is age 62 with 25 years of service. You can retire as early as age 50 with 20 years of service. It is, if you retire prior to age 60, there will be reductions in place. The basic benefit formula is you multiply three things together. You multiply your average salary, which is averaged over a five-year period of time, times your years of service, times a multiplier. The multiplier is 2% for anybody hired prior to July 1, 2018, and it's 1.8% for anybody hired July 1, 2018, early. So just to kind of summarize your results, this shows the results over the last three years, but if we kind of focus on 2023, right now, we do all of our calculations assuming that the investments will earn a 7.25% return each year. And then we have broken out your liabilities, the base liability of $54.2 million is the value of the benefits that have been accrued. So it's based on actual salaries and actual service through the July 1, 2023 valuation date. Then we also calculate what we call the present value of future benefits, which is about $69.4 million, and that takes into account future service and future salary increases. So what's been accrued so far is $54.2 million. What, what will be accrued over time, you know, based on our valuation, is about $15.2 million. That's anticipates the future salary increases and future benefit accruals for a total liability of $69.4 million. The market value of planned assets is about $24.1 million. So the accrued benefits, the present value of accrued benefits are about 44% funded, and the projected benefits are about 35% funded. We'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about potentially adjusting the way we determine your contribution to improve those funding ratios. To look at your planned assets, once again, it's a three-year history. If we focus on 2023, the market value of planned assets as of July 1, 2022 was about $22.3 million. Between employer and, and participant contributions, there were about $2.8 million in contributions during the year end of June 30, 23. There were benefit payments of about $3.3 million. There was an investment return of about $2.4 million, so that the net increase in planned assets on a market value basis was about $1.8 million, leading to assets of about $24.1 million. The one thing you'll note is, from year to year, the asset returns can be pretty volatile. You've got exposure to the market. That's not unusual at all. But you had a tremendous return in the year ended '21. Everybody had down years in the year ended '22, and then things came back in the, in this most recent year. But what we do in determining your contribution amounts is we smooth out these impacts of these asset gains and losses over a three-year period of time. So we actually develop what we call an actuarial value of assets for that purpose. So in determining your required contribution, we look at your unfunded liability, which as of July 1, 23, was about $44 million. And that unfunded liability is paid down over 25 years. So the, the amount to pay down that unfunded liability is about $2.5 million. Plan has expenses of about $100,000. So when we add that all together, the gross cost is about $2.6 million. The plan participants pick up about $1.1 million of that cost, and the city pays about $1.5 million. So the, the actuarily determined contribution is about 12% of pay. What the city is actually putting in is 14%, so it's, it's greater than what the current actuarily determined contribution is. The one thing to note, the way we determine the amount to pay down the unfunded liability, it is, we pay it down over 25 years, but we don't shorten that period from year to year. It's what's called an open period. That's something we, as I'll address later in the presentation, that's something we're looking at changing and closing that period, period of time to pay down that unfunded. So just, you know, briefly, your, your, you had very good investment return for the year end of June 30, 23, but that's still, we're still dealing with the impact of, of the adverse market conditions for the year end of June 30, 22. And as I mentioned earlier, when we look at the present value of, of future benefits, you know, plan is 35% funded. We're much better at predicting what the liabilities are going to be than what the assets are going to be. So because of that, you really want to look at the assets. That's what's really going to drive the funding changes in the funding ratio much more than the liabilities will. And as I said, we'll talk in a moment about potentially changing the plan's funding methodology to close that, close the amortization period. This slide just shows the returns from year to year. You know, it shows that assumed return of seven and a quarter percent compares it to the actual returns. What you see is that, that, that blue bar graph, the blue bars, you know, kind of are, are all over the place, which is what you would expect when you, when you're investing, and there's, you know, markets go up, markets go down, and that kind of reflects that. But at the end of the day, we are assuming that the assets will return seven and a quarter percent. This slide shows the projected benefit payouts from year to year for your existing, existing plan participants. So if you know, you, right now, you're paying out about $3.5 million of benefit payments each year. We're expecting over the next 20, 20 years or so that that's going to double. So, you know, when we, you know, you may think that, you know, the $25 million or so that are in the plan should be sufficient, but we are anticipating, based on our assumptions, that your benefit payouts are going to double over time. And like I said, this doesn't even take into account any new participants coming into the plan. So what we wanted to finish up with was talking about potentially changing the way we determine your actuarily determined contributions. As I mentioned earlier, right now, we look at, what do we, what's the liabilities associated with all the benefits we expect to be paid out of the plan, whether they've been accrued or whether it's based on future salary increases and future service. And we take that, that liability, subtract off the actuarial value of assets, and that unfunded liability, we're paying down over 25 years. But because we don't shorten that period of time from year to year, it is very, it's, it makes it very difficult to get to be 100% funded. So now, you know, right now, that methodology is leading to a 12% of pay contribution. You're putting in 14. But at the end of the day, when we project out the planned assets, you know, looking at the current contribution levels and anticipated benefit payouts, we would expect that there aren't going to be sufficient assets to pay out benefits beyond the year 2044, which is why we, we, you know, wanted to address this and, and look at potentially using a different approach. So what we propose is, rather than starting with the liabilities being based on all benefits, whether they be based on future salaries and service and current, and, and currently accrued benefits, what we want to do is just look at liabilities based on current years of service, but projecting out future salary increases. That's what's known as the entry-age normal liability. That's what we have to use for GASB purposes. And so we want to pay that down. We'll come up with the initial liability, pay it down over 30 years. The difference will be, all right, the first year will be 30 years to pay down the unfunded. What we haven't paid down, we will then pay down over '29, and so on, so that you will eventually get to be 100% funded. Then the other, there is then a second component to the cost, and that's what's called the normal cost, and that represents the present value of the benefits accruing in the current year. So we would pay down the, the unfunded based on service through the valuation date, and then, as a second component, add in what's going to be the value of the benefits accruing currently. And in doing so, you'll see that on the next slide. So what we would have are liabilities based on the July 1, 2023 valuation report. This new approach would be, we'd have liabilities of about $64.7 million, assets of about $25.4. We'd have an unfunded liability of $39.2 million. That would get paid down over 30 years. We would then add to that what we call the normal cost, which is the value of the benefit accruals, as well as the expenses for the year. That's another $800,000. So to pay down the unfunded would be $2.2 million. To pay for the current years accruals and expenses would be $800,000. So you'd have a total cost of $3 million, interest adjusted to $3.1 million. Your participant contributions would take one, care of 1.1 million of that, and the contribution would be about $2 million on the city side, which is about 16% of pay. Now, these numbers are based on your July 1, 2023 valuation. We would propose not implementing this until the next valuation, July 1, 2024. So the idea is to give you an idea of what this will do to your costs, but your costs will not go up until we complete the next valuation as of July 1, 2022. So as I mentioned, your, your funding requirements would be about 16% of pay. Right now, you're putting in about 14% of pay, so that, that there would be that, that difference. Now, after this initial unfunded liability, you would be paying down over 30 years. If there's changes in the unfunded going in the future, any of those changes, you would pay down over 10 years. The change might be, hey, we're expecting a seven and a quarter percent return. We got a 10% return. That would mean we have a gain, and that will lower your costs. You know, but you may have fewer deaths than we anticipate. That will increase your costs. All those kind of things, we would amortize over 10 years going into the future. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I know I covered a lot very quickly.
And Michelle and I will certainly be back to have further discussions with the Mayor and Council to talk about how we, how we proceed.
My first question is, how do you determine, how did you determine the projected benefits will go to zero in 60 years? Based on the course at this time that we're paying out more than we're taking in?
Yeah, actually, 20 years.
And our return isn't...
No, I'm looking at this graph.
Oh, that's just current enrollees. That's not counting anybody new.
That is the payout. That's not the unfunded. That's, that's just...
So that's the future.
That's just what's being paid out to the retirees. That's what that represents.
So the number hasn't always been 14.25%, correct?
That is correct.
That number has edged up over time. And I feel like every few years, I repeat myself when I say that we're not going to see the market provide the return of the expectation of cost that we incur. And so all we do is we edge that number up on the other side of the equation, knowing, like, I feel like this, this graph with the wave, like, I've been here for long enough to know that that wave has been always and constantly in front of us. In order to sort of keep that wave in front of us, we edge that number up to make up for the fact that we're increasing wages, if you will, on one side of the equation beyond what we can expect to accomplish or, or provide for in payout at the other end, while at the same time, the market says, just be prepared to kick in an extra 2.5% every year, because that's about what the difference is. You're going to have to make up, because the market just doesn't do 7.25%. I mean, that's the reality.
Yeah, whether the market's going to do, I, I can tell you, generally speaking, we see that, that investment return assumption typically somewhere between 6 and 3/4 to 7.
Right.
I mean, that's, you're, you're in kind of the range, I would, you know.
And we edge that number up fractions of a percentage or full percentages points in direct correlation to our increase in payout associated with the escalation over time of wage scale. And that's what we're doing. And I've accepted that. I've always accepted that we're never going to catch up. You can come in and recommend whatever percentage number you have, but, you know, it's not going to accomplish bringing that number to 100%.
It's going to take a long time. There's absolutely...
I mean, I, I, I don't think it'll ever catch up. It's sort of like, you know, when the school board looks at, it's, you know, building, maintenance things, that we've got $65 million worth of stuff we need, you know, to address, and that number never goes to zero, and so I just accept that.
Well, the one comment I, I would make is, the intent of the change in methodology is, yeah, it's almost impossible to get there under our current methodology. So now, we are going to be, that, the amount to pay down the unfunded, we're, we're, we're determining that under a closed period of time. So it's harder to kick things down the road with this, with this new approach.
I mean, I, I feel like we'll, we'll be back and edge the number differently.
Because you're shortening the road.
In the future.
Correct.
I mean, you're going from 30 to 29, 28, to eventually...
Well, but during that time, you're paying it down as well, so...
Right. Not really. What you're doing is, you're making the road last longer. You're not shortening it.
Well, we are, because if there are, like I said, if we have actuarial gains or losses, the proposal would be to amortize those over 10 years. So future changes, whether it be because salaries go up by more than we expect, or assets underperform, and there's a higher unfunded than we expect, we, we would propose paying that down over 10 years, rather than the 25 that you're going. So, yeah, it's definitely shortening. It is shortening the period. Initially, that 30 years is longer, but it's a closed period. So, and then anything beyond that would be a much shorter period.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to those changes. Just no differently that I'm not opposed to accepting this is how we're going to operate, but I don't think that those two things can be viewed in the vacuum of our broader operational relationships.
Right. And, and I could tell you, just on, on my end, as far as my professional standards go, this is an issue that's getting, you know, more and more scrutiny, you know, that whole how you were paying down that unfunded. Because like I said, in the past, it was very, very, this was a very typical approach in public plans. You're not, you're seeing that change now. So, so changing the approach is, is also, you know, it's, at some point, can be demanded by standards as well.
If that's all you've got for Bill, I'll ask Michelle to join us at the table, and she can talk a little bit about investments. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Don't go too far, though. Is this you?
There we are. So hello, everyone. This is my first time in front of the mayor and council. I've been working with the city of Hagerstown for about five years now, and I work with my colleague, Chris Little, who has been on this relationship for, for much longer than I have been. I'm an investment market director at PNC. I work exclusively with organizations, so municipalities, corporations, nonprofits, so we don't work with any type of personal assets. So if we'll flip to, yep, the executive summary. So how we govern this plan from an investment perspective, it's governed by an investment policy statement. So PNC is an investment fiduciary over the plan assets, along with the committee, and we meet with the committee on a quarterly basis. In collaboration with the committee, we do have this investment policy statement. This is a roadmap which tells us how to invest the assets according to the goals of the plan. So currently, you can see the targeted asset allocation of the plan, 65% equity, 32% fixed income, and 3% cash. And always when we're managing public plans like City of Hagerstown Police and Fire, we are balancing the need for that growth, that high return target that we were talking about, plus the need to reduce volatility year to year. So those two things work in contrast to one another. The more equity you have, the more volatility you're going to have year to year, but the more growth over time you're going to have. We also are managing the liquidity, so there's certainly a lot of contributions coming in and even more benefit payments going out. So that's how we came up with the asset allocation, 65% equity, 32% fixed income, 3% cash. You can see the, the market values as of the end of the fiscal year, 24 million, which was up from the year prior, and as of the end of the year, 25.1 million, and as of yesterday, 25.6 million, so as of yesterday's close. So the market has been very supportive in 2023. So we have a little bit of market commentary down here, and I think, you know, if I could take us back just a few years, of, of course, we had the pandemic and the drive out of the pandemic. Well, that caused inflation to be higher, which caused the Federal Reserve to raise interest rates at the fastest pace they ever had in 2022. So that's really why we saw to lower interest rates three to four times. We're expecting towards the second half of this year. And we have, we had been calling for an economic recession. We have actually taken that off the table, so we think that is less likely to happen. We do think we can have a soft landing, but it is not going to be without volatility. We certainly have a lot of geopolitical concerns that are weighing on the market. We also have these magnificent seven, you've probably heard about them, that have been leading the market, so we've started to see some bifurcation of those. Basically, you know, when, and what happened most recently, when Nvidia reported some not-so-great news, Nvidia fell 5%, and the S and P 500 fell with it, because it just makes up such a big portion of that. And then, of course, I, it's an election year as well. So a lot of volatility still in play from a market perspective, and we have positioned the portfolio accordingly. So if we go to the next page, this is as of the fiscal year end in 2023. So in 2023, the portfolio was up about 10.8%, but you can just see the growth of the portfolio we have since 2004 here at the bottom. But I'll, I'll just point out, you know, to have 2022, you see that little dip in 2023, 2022, and we're making our way out of that in 2023. Over the long term, longer term, three years, 6.43, 6.10, that does incorporate, of course, the pandemic time period and also the 2022 time period. You can see we're very close to our investment policy targets, the amount of risk and return expectations that we have set, so 60, 66% equity, 31% fixed income, 3% cash. Flipping to the next page, so this is just six months later, and I, I wanted to draw your attention to this page. You can see just a six-month movement, and again, these are point-to-point times in the market, but just a six-month movement, you can see the one-year up 17 and a half percent, so that is your performance for 2023, great year in the market. And then over the five-year, just pointing out 8.9% average annualized return. So I say that in the sense that a lot of times, the point you start at and the point you end at can make a big difference when we think about the, the market return. But I think from our perspective, you know, we're happy with the portfolio performance, how it has done, given the asset allocation that we have, given those three risks that I talked about balancing, so not only the need for growth, but also the need to dampen your year-to-year volatility and the need for liquidity as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything for us?
Glenn, you got anything to add?
Nope, I think we're doing a great job. I really want to commend our committee and the support that we have. I think that our committee really looks at our fiduciary responsibility and really look hard at some of the, the wants and the wishes of the, of the board, and we kind of bring it back to reality and really look at our job as fiduciaries for this plan by raising our contribution from seven to nine percent, cutting the, increasing the years of service and cutting the funding percentage, and we're doing the things necessary to help assist with helping make this plan more solid as well. So I think all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, we good?
So I assume that what this all means is that the city will need to contribute more on an annual basis to fully fund this plan, right? And did I hear correctly that the debt's not anticipated to start until July 1st of 2025?
Well, the debt's already there, but, but yes.
Well, as far as what...
Implementation...
The adoption would be for the year end of June 30, 2025.
Pardon me?
Would be for the year end of June 30, 2025.
Which is the one that starts...
July 24.
So I have this...
FY '26.
Which is the budget that we're about to review this year.
No, it's the next one.
One year removed.
Next one. FY '26, not FY '25.
Do we have any numbers yet? Because these are the current numbers.
Based on, based on the July 1, 2023 report, we're assuming that the, that it indicates 16% of pay contribution rather than 4%.
So an increase of 2% of pay. And that's just for the fire and police pension. What about the everybody else pension? Same thing?
The state's retirement plan sends us figures every year that we adjust the budget for.
In her memo, she, I probably, she includes a comparison of the state plan as our fire and police plan. The difference is, and I think you accentuate it very well in this one sentence, which says, I lost it now. Basically, we make the decision, rather than the state plan where the state makes the decision. That's the big difference. So the state plan basically says, hey, you've got all pretty much the same terms. It's just, you know, the 9% is the employee, because the state decides that, and if you don't hit the market, which we don't, right, on any given year, then you kick in the difference, and the state really sort of drives that train here. We're sort of driving our own train as it applies to those two specific employee groups.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Next, 2024 Summer Camp Grant Program, Eric Deike, Director of Public Works. Summer camp again. The years are worn by quick.
Every year it comes up. Yeah, so the little difference from last year to this year is we still have the same amount of funding amount, which is $75,000. We only have four groups this year. Last year, we had five apply. Beacon House was one of them, but they're no longer in operation, is my understanding. And so the 75,000 pretty much covers all four groups that applied, which was the Hagerstown YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., and the Robert W. Johnson Community Center. Hagerstown YMCA and our Robert Johnson can be fully funded with the amount they requested, and Boys and Girls Club and Girls Inc. are only, they're only short, let's say, on their funding by $500 each, but they're actually getting much more than they did even last year, because that difference that was to the fifth player, which is Beacon House, you know, really makes a difference. And so they're almost all fully funded for this year. As you know, R.W. Johnson has a new, has a new director, and so they seem very on the ball about having a, a camp this year, and so we're pretty excited about that, so we're glad to see that happening.
Good stuff.
Did she find $1,000?
I was about to say.
Well, you know, I thought about that.
Is it because they don't have their bill in and maybe need, and need more?
I thought about asking, you know, our finance director and I thought, what it's, what they're getting, but remember, those two groups are also getting 4,000 and 4,500 more than what they got last year, so it seemed like, you know, we cut them 500, that's pretty minor, so...
You guys, questions?
Awesome.
Good? Thank you.
I'll accept that.
Can't find $1,000. Invest Hagerstown City Center Grant, 6 through 16 West...
Jeez, goodness.
6 through 16 West Washington Street, Chris Simmerly, Economic Development Specialist. That's like a poem.
Can you say that again?
Yes, let me say it again for the record.
Good afternoon. So I am here to review a recommendation from the review committee to discuss a potential termination of the Invest Hagerstown City Center redevelopment grant for the project at 6 to 16 West Washington Street. The total grant amount is $250,000. Some background on the project itself, so we have that. The property is 6 to 16 West Washington Street. Once again, the proposed total investment for that project was $783,620 for the renovation of the second floor to create 18 to 20 telework and coworking offices with fully furnished shared workspaces, and third floor was to create six to eight luxury apartments and condos. The final scuffle work completed was the second floor having the creation of 16, about 16 private offices and shared workspaces for businesses and teleworking professionals, and the third floor saw the creation of eight market rate apartments. Of the 783,620 proposed total investment, staff have reviewed and verified a total eligible cost of $396,517 that has been completed to date with receipts that can be verified for those, which is far below the minimum investment required for the approval that they received, $750,000. On May 8th of last year, a letter of, for opportunity of work correction was sent to the developer outlining requirements to bring them back into compliance, which set a deadline of, for response of June 9th last year, once again. And staff didn't meet with the developer to review that letter and the details provided inside of it. Review committee did not receive what was outlined inside the letter, unfortunately, and the project is not currently in compliant, in compliance as a result. Staff have met with the developer on multiple occasions, working through the different points, trying to see how we can assist them, and also recently toured the property with the developer middle of last month as well. At this time, the review committee has determined that it has not met the guideline requirements of the Invest Hagerstown program for two main reasons. Number one, the financial, the financials don't meet the minimum investment requirements, and number two, the project has not met the required guidelines of the Invest Hagerstown program as a whole. For those reasons, the review committee recommends the Invest Hagerstown incentive be terminated due to noncompliance, and we are bringing it to mayor and council for discussion and if there's anything we can assist with on this side.
I'm fine with it. I think it's appropriate.
Yes, it's appropriate.
Thank you. So we'll be bringing this back to the regular session after the official vote at that, at
Invest Hagerstown Recommendation for Forfeited Funds, Chris Simmerly, Economic Development Specialist, and Amanda Gregg, our Business and Community Development Finance Specialist. Hi, Amanda.
Hey.
So we are here to review some recommendation of reusing forfeited City Center redevelopment grant funds for the Invest Hagerstown's program as a whole. Total forfeited City Center redevelopment grant funds to date are a total of $830,000 outlined in the chart in front of you. Staff are recommending keeping 500,000 of that, of that amount within our City Center redevelopment grant bucket per se, to be reserved just specifically for that program, as well as we recommend reallocating 330,000 of the above funding as well to be used for any of the four remaining Invest Hagerstown grant programs on a first-come, first-turied And below, at the bottom of the chart, you have outlined where we are currently at with funding levels remaining for the current fiscal year, which is a total of $48,089.81, which would otherwise last us through June 30th, and once funds have been depleted, we would, if mayor and council wish, suspend the program for applications the next fiscal year, if it were pre-approved once again. With some background, we have a large amount of interest with development projects at the moment on both the City Wide Redevelopment Grant for businesses trying to fill out a space, rent reallocation for bring our apartments up to nicer condition, facade projects, signage projects, and others as well. Are there any questions?
How would the $330,000 you're recommending be allocated over these four programs? Is it just one bucket and then whatever comes first, or is it a certain amount for each of these four?
So it would be on a first-come, first-turied basis, that we were not putting ourselves into a situation where we have a large number of interest in only one program and not so much in the other ones, so we can support as many programs as come.
So one bucket that you can allocate across all four of these?
Correct.
It sounds like you had a question.
No, I didn't.
Maybe it's the shirt. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Such a mystery.
Yeah, that is right. I thought I, I thought it was right that time. Making me feel like my spidey sense is wrong. Proposed amendments to chapter 204 signs, the billboard ordinance. Kathleen Mar, Director of Planning and Code Administration, and Paul Paul, Neighborhood Services Manager.
Good afternoon. We gave you a situating presentation in December on the proposed upgrades of billboard ordinance. You were delighted, and we said we were going to go away and reach out to the billboard companies to see if they had any input, and so we sent letters or emails to everybody who's in the billboard business in Hagerstown, and we heard back from one, one of the large companies just wanting to know what we were doing, wanting to be kept up to date, but nobody had any comments, so we took that as they were not unhappy with what we were proposing. And so we are back now to see if the mayor and council are still okay with moving forward, and if so, we would introduce it at the end of this month and approve it the following month. I can go through here and give you the highlights again of what we did, but one thing that has occurred to me is that part of what we're doing is removing all the language about exemptions based on signed content, and what got swept up in that very noble effort was governmental signs. And so I'm suggesting that we add this into the definitions, a definition for governmental signs, and then saying that they, because they serve a public purpose, they are not subject to this code, which is a typical thing to have in a signed package of any Would you like me to go through again what was proposed to change?
I only had one question that I think I asked before, and that had to do with... I only had one question that I think I asked before, and that had to do with what's referred to as, I guess, mobile or portable signs, which if I remember correctly, you defined as kind of a sign on a trailer that somebody would put out or move on wheels, that somebody could move out to the front and bring it back. But I don't remember if I asked or if there was an answer to the question about mobile, what I'll refer to as mobile billboards, which are big LED screens mounted on trucks to drive around. Is that contemplated in here? Do we tear?
It's not contemplated in here.
And I don't, I don't know where that would fall under chapter sixty of the city ordinances with the police monitoring motor vehicle traffic.
Yeah, because this deals with signs that are.
Fixed.
Yeah. Yes, semi-permanently are really fixed, not, not ones that are roving around.
Doesn't apply in here one way or the other.
Right.
Okay, that's the only question.
Okay, and with the addition to the definitions?
No, I don't want any government term.
I can read that into the record, since the people who are watching would not know what I passed out, to proposing to add to the definitions governmental signs, which are signs erected and maintained by the city, county, state, or federal government for designation or direction to community facilities to provide information on traffic control and public safety and to provide public service announcements. Such signs serve a public purpose, and as such are exempted from this code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Project Restore at two-point-oh application grant. Brittany Arizmende, Community Engagement Officer.
Hello. Okay, so we, before you hear, we are requesting to, for your approval, to, or to, for us to apply for Project Restore two-point-zero. It differs from the previous rounds because previously, businesses would apply directly to DHCD. This is different now, so place-based organizations is who can apply for, for the funds this round. So essentially, and, and DCED and Main Street, we've met multiple times to figure out what, what the best route is to go for application to try to maximize investment and possible grant money, which we are actually meeting again tomorrow, just to kind of go through all the details. But we are planning to apply for the full three-hundred thousand dollars. So you can apply and ask for between thirty thousand to three-hundred thousand dollars. Has to be within a sustainable community. We, so we can apply as Main Street and as DCED. So DCED could apply for any area within the sustainable community, but not Main Street, if that makes sense. So just seeking approval that we can move forward with applying. Application opens tomorrow, and the deadline is April twenty-fourth.
And are you planning to apply with just one of those organizations or with both?
I think both. We had initially discussed one, and we're going to finalize that tomorrow. So tentatively both, that's probably the direction we're moving in. I did ask DHCD staff their recommendation, and then they said, why wouldn't you apply as both? Because then you could double the amount, as long as we feel that we can spend that money in the ti, in the deadline they gave us, so.
Because you have to justify your request.
Yes, and we have, I, I'm, hopefully you all have seen, we set out a business interest form, so we're trying to gauge interest. We've taken inventory of vacant storefronts, and then we're going to meet together just to create a very solid application to submit.
Nice. So just to be clear, if there are two applications, one from downtown Hagerstown Main Street and one from the Department of Economic and Community Development, they would each be, could each be three-hundred thousand dollar requests for an aggregate of six-hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter. That's what I was trying to make clear for the public.
I thought so, and I just wanted to make sure.
However, however, I do want to put the caveat out there. We are not guaranteed that money. So I do not want people to get the idea that we are securing six-hundred thousand dollars. That will be amazing if we do, but until then, we want to lean on the side of caution. That is the goal, but that is not guaranteed.
What is their total program expenditure for across the state?
We were told roughly eight million. There is no match required.
But is that set, that's set already, right? It's not something that the legislature, let's, let, now I'm like you.
No.
Legislature can pull back.
That's correct, yes.
Scratch it.
We're good to go?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Don't know where I'm going, because I got another one.
Oh, yeah, stay here. This, this, a parent guild lamp post declarations for graduation program, and Brittany Arizmende, our Community Engagement Officer.
Yes, so for this one, very similar to what Barbara Ingram Foundation does during, I think it's November. This is for graduating seniors. They just want approval to do their lamp post signs to congratulate seniors, and they would be installed at the very end of April and then taken down early June.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
City Administrator.
Shoot, blew my timeline out of the water this time.
Yeah, you did. Ah, I'll take it.
Again, if you got the under, you win. Just a couple of things. First, just a brief legislative news. We're headed up towards crossover where bills that originate in the House go to the Senate if they pass through the House and vice versa. So that's going to ramp things up a little bit next week when hearings start on the opposite side of the, of the building. So far, it seems the housing bills are in hearing this week. Those seem to be the big things, along with the budget. Again, this is one of those times where the prediction that budgets were going to be tight, a lot of times, we get to this stage of the game, everything seems to loosen up. They're not loosening up this time of the state, so it'll be interesting to see where, where all of that falls. So I'll have more information going on. It's kind of a, everybody just wrapping their hearings up this week. And also, the Saturday is really kind of the start of event season for activities in the city. Washington County Recreation is having a St. Patrick's Day run on Saturday. Multiple, there's an eight-k run, there's a one-k walk, there's a kids' walk, and something, I can't remember what the other one is. All that starts at ten o'clock. Registration, I think, starts at seven-thirty, and it usually packs downtown. We wanted to make sure that everything was safe for folks going up by for the walk, going up past the stadium construction. We've been assured that fences will be up and it'll be very safe to walk up Baltimore and then take the ride on Summit and head down towards, towards the Alpine Bar. So looking forward to that, and that is it for me.
Councilwoman Mackenzie?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Briney?
All right, nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Yeah, I just want to thank Williamsport High School for inviting me to speak on their Women's History Month segment. I was able to meet with their science class, which is cool. So I had a little prep beforehand to plug microscopes and cells and genes, and I was like, yes, this is, this is my, my alley. And also tie in government and community service, so thank you for the invitation. And along with all the activities on Saturday, I've been invited, and mayor, you've been invited as well, to attend the Hagerstown Heat Practice. They won the National Chirling Association a few weeks ago in Texas, so they're super excited about that and offered us to come check them out. And another chirling was my background too, so, you know, it's going to be, it's a fun week for me.
Full circle.
Yeah, full circle. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Asha?
I have nothing.
Council administrator?
Just two things. One, I hope everybody gets a chance to check out all the festivities on Saturday downtown. As city administrator indicated, it's going to be a huge crowd, a lot of festivities, so please. And, and a big congratulations to, to Hagerstown's own Erin Brooks on the NCAA championship, so that's all I had.
Let me talk to you. Four-time, four-time champion.
Congratulations to Erin, four-time, you make Hagerstown proud. We're very proud of you. Yes, we definitely want to, want to get Erin in here, and I think, I think we should talk to him about having an Erin Brooks Day and making that like a, and a key to the city, yeah. Yeah, and an Erin Brooks Day, that would be like a, a good day for the young people to kind of be able to celebrate, you know, just all the cool things that he's done. I want to say, if I were mayor, contests was ended on Friday, but I have some letters that are thanking me for coming to talk to their class about if they, you know, about what they should write in their essay. And I just want to share this one from Ms. Harmony, and she said, Dear Mayor Martinez, thank you for taking time out your day to come visit us, especially on your anniversary. I didn't realize that you don't really have power. And, this is why I'm reading it. And it's about you and the councils gathering around the table, and you need at least three people to say yes about the idea. Also, I think that the idea, that idea will help me in my essay. I've also learned from you that no matter what you do, you just have to have relationships. Sincerely, Harmony. So at first, I was reading it, and I was like, what, what? They were saying like, you don't have to get along with people. I'm like, where did they get that from? But in my talk, if I were mayor, I was basically talking about, you know, sitting here as the mayor, it's the council that makes the decisions and the relationships that are needed. And so I just think that that, I'm going to be reading these every now and then, and they're really, really cool. And so just for everyone out there, you do not have to like people in order to get things done. And no, I don't really have the power. And I want to say to parents and neighbors and people that care about kids, just talk to them when you see them about the bikes. Multiple times coming down Pennsylvania Avenue the wrong way on a Willy, and they're probably teenage age up by North High. And it's just, I, I feel bad for the, the folks that are driving the cars coming up because it's a scare when you have a kid coming towards you on a Willy. And so if you just take the time out and talk to your young people about safety, I mean, there's not too much you can really say if someone accidentally hurts your child, except for, you know, when they take that bike out, make sure you're having those conversations, you know, to make sure they're, they're following safety rules within the city. And with that, we're adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Community Engagement Officer Brittany Arizmendi. Welcome back to the show. You're a frequent flyer here on Council Rap.
I know. It seems like I'm always the chosen one here.
How does that happen? That's the real question, but glad to have you, and as always, we can talk about some of the things that are coming up in the city. This is a big weekend ahead, and much more to come after that. We'll get to that eventually, but wanted to talk a little bit about the agenda item and what you presented on at the meeting earlier, talking about the potential for $300,000 from Project Restore 2.0 for Main Street, or however that's sliced up, and then the potential for another $300,000 for community and economic development. However, if you don't ask, you get nothing, if you do ask, you don't know exactly what you'll get at this point. So talk a little bit about that, where the money's coming from, where that, you know, you apply for the grant and all of that that's taking place.
Sure. So, Project Restore 2.0 is different, if anyone's familiar with Project Restore. So, we have a lot of businesses within our whole county that were funded through Project Restore, several of which are located downtown. This money is from ARPA funds that has, that the state has received.
Okay.
So this money is coming from the Department of Housing and Community Development through the state of Maryland, and this round 2.0 is different from the others because place-based organizations are the only ones that can apply. So, we as Main Street will apply for this grant, and then if slash, hopefully when, we receive funding, we will actually put out an application for our local businesses, and then they will apply based off the amount of funding that we have received from the state.
Okay.
So that's kind of how that, that will work this time.
How did it work previously?
Previously, the, really, it was hands-off at a city and county level. It was between the business owner, business or property owner, and the state.
All right.
So, there wasn't much involvement from the, the city or the county, but now it is, we are the ones that are going to kind of have to take the lead on the grant, on, on how we, who we're giving it to, we're going to have to do our own grant application process. So that's what's to come in the future.
Should the city of Hagerstown receive money from the grant request? How do you see this as a positive for businesses as opposed to the way it was done previously with the city being the one who would then hand out the funds?
Short answer is the timing of when they get the money. We have been told we'll hopefully know by June, whether or not, how much money we are getting, and then we anticipate to have a pretty quick turnaround to have an application out for here, just because the deadline for all the funds to be used is December of 2025, which sounds like it's far away, but when it comes to a construction project, to a fit-out, for anything new business or expanding business related, that's not a ton of time. So we, we're also going to take that into consideration when we're looking at, if we do receive funding, who's receiving the funding, where is that going, how is that going to be used?
So you'll sort of determine whether you believe that whatever that request is that might come from a business, whether that's realistic within the timeframe?
Yes, and if it is a new business, we have to be guaranteed that they're going to be open no later than December 2025.
Okay, okay. What, what would this money mean for businesses, and what's it meant in the past? What, what are some of the uses that businesses have decided on when it comes to money like this? Because it's something that they're probably not counting on, but should they get it, then they're able to do, maybe fill in the blank, whatever it might be.
Yeah, I think it makes, there are a lot of intimidating properties downtown because of the historical aspects, things may just not be up to par, and...
The challenges are just greater.
Yes, but with that, you also get a different type of community than if you were at a strip mall or in a mall of any sort. So, it's really what, and those are the types of business, small businesses that we're looking for in downtown. We want the people that are going to be community-based and offer something that's unique and different for the people who are coming downtown to shop or eat or drink. I was not here with the city during the first round of Project Restore, but I think Alpine Plant Bar was a recipient of this award in a previous round. I believe Never Bored Games was a recipient. I believe Slam the Weight may have been a recipient. So we have several businesses in the downtown area that have done really great things with turning properties around, giving them a new use, and that's really who our target market is. We want a small business owner who's just kind of been sitting back waiting for the perfect opportunity, or just for that push, that extra push they need to take that step out, because we know that it can, it can be scary, it can be frightening, but this could potentially be the last time for Project Restore, because ARPA funds, it's a, it's a one-time thing, hopefully, we'll never have another pandemic and need it again.
Yeah, let's, let's hope not, as far as that's concerned, for sure.
Yes, but this is a great opportunity, and not only with, there may be funds available, but with all of the renovations and revitalization that's happening downtown, I really do feel like now is the time to get in and get that business established.
And when you take the name of this, literally, Project Restore 2.0, but the restore part, so just correct me if I'm wrong here, but these are funds for businesses who are looking to do something, to become a business, or if you're already a business, are you able to apply for funding on this? I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the public understands what we're talking about here.
This is mainly for new businesses. Unless a business is looking to expand their operations into a new or a different building, this is pretty much for new business, and it's specifically for retail and restaurant. That's what we're looking for here in downtown Hagerstown.
Okay, and we talked about, or you talked about during the, the meeting about, you know, asking for the maximum, which is $300,000, and you said that you can do that as Main Street, and then the Department of Community and Economic Development can also do that. But my understanding is, if you have separate applications in, whether it's for the same amount or not, you're not necessarily competing against each other as that would play out. So you could wind up with, you know, one or the other could get $300,000 potentially, or you could get that total of $600,000, but you're not competing against each other.
That's what we've been told, and the reason why we aren't competing against each other is because Main Street, we would be applying for the boundary within Main Street, and then Economic Development would be doing the rest of the sustainable community.
So the footprint's different?
Yes, exactly. So, I don't know how, how much money is going to be requested at the state level from different place-based organizations. I suspect pretty much everyone's going to ask for the full amount, maybe they won't, but again, they're going to want to see that we feel confident that we have businesses that can come into these spaces and can be up and running by that December 2025.
And that's what I was going to ask you, that's, that's my next question. How do you quantify that in an application? I guess, have you put feelers out with, okay, within the community already?
Yep, so we, in partnership with DCED, we have put out a business interest form. So, that's for any businesses that may be interested in starting a retail shop or a restaurant here in downtown. We are going to meet this week to discuss and go through the applications, and then we'll see from there. It's not too late, if you're just seeing this and you're interested, please feel free to reach out to us. You can reach out to Downtown Hagerstown on Facebook or Instagram, or you can email So it's not too late, if this is the first time you're seeing this or hearing this, but please do not delay in reaching out to us, because we are going to be compiling our applications here within the next week or so, and we want to make sure we have everything lined up to ask for the correct amount of money that we feel like is attainable for these different areas.
And the application period opens tomorrow, so as you said, you'll be getting together with DCED and having those discussions sooner rather than later. Let's shift gears and, you know, sort of take a look at the landscape here, what's coming up. Beautiful day today, some gorgeous weather to come, we're still going to sort of ride the roller coaster when it comes to temperatures here over the next month or so, as we always do this time of year, it's rather turbulent, but got spring fever for sure, and this weekend is a big start really to all of that downtown. What do we begin with?
So we are kicking off with St. Patrick's Day Run Fest, which has gone on for several years now. That's hosted by Washington County Parks and Recreation, and all proceeds go to the Community Free Clinic, and we are actually piggybacking off of that annual event by doing a street festival. So we have an Irish group coming down from Pennsylvania, they'll be performing in Potomac Walk, we have ACT Black Box, they're going to be doing a little showcase from their American Idiot show, they'll be on the square. We are going to have a costume contest and a Riverdance dance-off happening on Saturday. So, we hope to see you there.
I'd have to have a lot of green beer in me to even attempt that.
We can probably hook you up with that.
That's not a good idea.
We, we also have green mugs that we will be selling, so come find us at the Main Street table, we'll be selling those mugs, those mugs will allow you to get drinks from the participating bars and restaurants, you'll be able to take those out on the street, we'll have a bounce house there. So yeah, we're going to be having a fun day. So that kicks off kind of the March, Spring fling of events, and then in April, at the end of April, we have Thunder in the Square on Friday, April 26th. That same evening, we are, is the kickoff of our new Decades Music Series, so that'll be featuring the Cruisers, and that will be in University Plaza.
Looking forward to that.
And then the very next day, we'll have our Spring Market, which will be an artisan market featuring handmade vendors. And then, I didn't mention this, and actually, we haven't put anything out about this yet, but during spring break, we are going to be doing an Easter egg scavenger hunt, so stay tuned for details and what that looks like.
That sounds pretty cool, I'm intrigued by that.
We are partnering with the Flying Box Cars for this.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
Much to look forward to, and there's one event that's already underway, I know Council Member Schindler was talking about it before he even left here this evening.
Yes, I forgot to mention, March is Taste of Downtown, so if you haven't received your passport yet, we just got more printed because we ran out, which is a great problem.
Yes, it is.
But we have our passports, and Council Member Schindler, he and his son, I think they've gotten four, four or five stamps at this point. There are 19 on the passport, 28 South is a free stamp now, for anyone that it's asking. So there are only 18 to hit, so you have a little more than half the month left to make it to those restaurants. And then, starting March 17th through the 23rd, we're actually doing Restaurant Week, and we will be putting specials out, hopefully, within the next few days about the different specials. Pizza Pretzel's going to do Make Your Own Pizza Night on that Monday, we have a walking food tour that Thursday, so a lot of different activities and specials.
That stuff, that stuff is much more my speed.
There you go, food involved, Wes is there.
Yeah, yeah, sign me up for that. What, what's, what's the best way for people to find out about these things, when you say you're going to put the information out there, just let them know exactly where it is?
DowntownHagerstown.org is the best place to go, or follow Downtown Hagerstown on Facebook or Instagram, we are very active on those places. Of course, you can sign up to subscribe to our mailing list on our website, so lots of options.
Yeah, plenty of options, all you have to do is look them up, and you want to be as involved as possible, because there's always something new coming with Brittany, you never know. I mean, there's, because as, as she revealed here, something that hadn't even been put out to the public just yet, so, yeah, again, lots of exclusive information right here on Council Rap. Thanks for your time this evening, I know you're a little under the weather, so let you get back to recuperating, but there's, there's lots going on here in Hagerstown as always, and... There's lots going on here in Hagerstown as always, and we appreciate you tuning in, following the council meeting for Council Rap. For this time, that is a wrap. I'll see you next time.